It took our September 7th council meeting to order. We will start with an invocation and pledge of allegiance and council member Ray along with a quarter of the scouts and Gilbert will be helping us tonight.
Do you want to start with the pledge, Mayor? Wonderful. So we have lots of scouts here tonight. We are glad to have them here. It must be the month of the Constitution Fair where they'll be doing citizenship in the community, we hope. And I suspect that council member Taylor will invite everyone to that after this. But we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Andrew has been volunteered to do the pledge of allegiance for us. So if the audience would please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its champions, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to pass the microphone down. If you guys will introduce yourselves, the leaders can just say which troop or which pack they're with. If the scouts would let us know what their name is, what the troop or pack is, and what your current rank is, we'd appreciate it. And as the microphone goes down, I will be passing out a hand, a pocket constitution for each one of you guys to take home and to look at with your troop, with your pack, and with your family. So we'll start with Andrew.
Council member Ray, just for ease of movement tonight, just name and rank. They don't have to do their troop number.
Perfect. Name, rank. Got it, Andrew?
Andrew Gallup, star.
Kayden Powell, scout.
Joshua Palmer, star.
Nathan Powell, scout.
Jacob Bryce, star.
Mason Miller, tenderfoot.
Logan Bryce, tenderfoot.
Jared Rex.
Owen.
Carson.
Craig.
Lee.
Patrick Starks.
Riker.
We were wee-balows.
Nathan Taylor, first class.
Mitchell Jones, first class.
I am Martin Bryan Holt and I'm a first class.
Nolan Tenney, star.
Kimball Bryan Holt, life.
Mac Jones, life.
Corbin Glenn, star, I mean scout.
Taggart Lorenzana, tenderfoot.
Kayden Goodrich, scout.
Gunner Farn, scout.
Jackson Miller, scout.
Waganburg, scout.
Bennett Collmore, scout.
Brockton Seersstrom, tenderfoot.
Matthew Ray, first class.
Giancarlo Benedetto, first class.
Colin Foley, tenderfoot.
I'm Paca Blue, so I'm like a second class or first class.
Hopefully soon to be first class, right? So to all the scouts, we welcome you guys to our council meeting. We hope that you're able to learn something here tonight. And the one thing that we ask of you, one of the things we ask of you is to make sure you thank your leaders for all that they do, your cub masters, your den leaders, your troop leaders. And we are grateful for you guys to be here today and thanks for coming. You're welcome to go back and sit in the audience.
Thank you, scouts. Nice work. At this time, we'd like to invite Pastor Eric Jones from Evident Life Church to the podium to offer our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, it's great to be here tonight again. It's always a blessing to come and bring the invocation. I was driving over, I was thinking about the community that we live in, and I mean, Gilbert's amazing, and those of us who've lived here for a long time truly understand that, and I hope we all appreciate it, and that we can just give thanks to the Lord because it's because of Him ultimately. So let's pray. Lord, we thank you. We humbly give thanks, God, for the blessings that we have in our community here in Gilbert. God, I'm just reminded of our state motto, "Detat Deus," which means that God, you enrich. And we just recognize that again tonight, that it's you who enrich us. It's because of you that we're blessed. Every good and perfect gift, as Scripture says, comes down from the Father of Lights, comes straight down from you, and so we thank you for the many blessings. And we turn to you and we ask for grace and guidance as we continue to live as neighbors in this community. We ask, God, that you would help us to do the two most important things, which are to love you with our everything and to love our neighbors as ourselves. Lord, I thank you for a community that's filled with compassion. God, that we have so many people here who live by that golden rule, as Scripture says, that it's better to give than to receive. And Lord, I ask that as we love one another and care for one another, that we would truly look for those who have needs around us. God, that we would have eyes to see those who are truly hurting, and that we would step out with compassion and serve and love and care well. Lord, I thank you for these leaders that we have, our town council. I thank you for their compassion. I thank you for their character, for their care as they lead. I thank you that they are people that love this community and continue to show that as they give so much. We ask your blessing upon their lives and on their family. And we just ask all of this, and we declare all of this and speak all of this in the name of Jesus, who's the Son of God, the Lord and Savior, the hope of all nations, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Jones. We appreciate you. At this time, the clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Victor Peterson.
Here.
Council member Scott Anderson.
Here.
Council member Eddie Cook.
Here.
Council member Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Council member Jordan Ray.
Here.
Council member Jared Taylor.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you, Lisa. We have moved Agenda Item 1 to a future meeting, to our September 21st council meeting, so that moves us directly to communications from citizens. And at this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not currently on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Vice Mayor, do we have any requests to speak?
Mayor, we have one request from Max Massour. I'm getting that name right. And Max, you'll have three minutes. Can I see here? Okay. Just if you'll look to the lights for your cues, you'll have a yellow light that'll let you know you've got 30 seconds. And when it's red, you're out of time. Just state your name and whether or not you're a Gilbert resident for the record for us before you-
Max, you can use that microphone that's just to your right. See how it's kind of sticking out of the podium? That one, perfect. Okay.
My name is Max Mauser and I am a Gilbert resident. Big League Dreams is two blocks down from my street, from, down the street from my house. I play in the Monday Night League in the fall and spring, as well as several tournaments throughout the year. I play for Mountain Magic Baseball's 11-team as the center fielder. Big League Dreams is our home field. If Big League Dreams doesn't reopen, I'll still continue to play baseball, but instead of having all, all of the teams travel to Gilbert from all over the West Coast, we will all travel to Chandler and Peoria to play our games. I want a chance to play where we have some home field advantage. I came to the town council meeting last month and told you that I wanted Big League Dreams to stay open because I loved baseball and that the field was special to me. But this time, I want to ask a question. I read that the reports have been made that surpass the safety requirements for both inner structures and the outfield walls. I also read that town of, that the town of Gilbert still won't accept the reports. My question is, what can my teammates and I do to make it so that we can continue to play baseball in Gilbert?
Thank you, Max. We appreciate you coming tonight. I'm going to ask that our Parks and Recreation Director, Rod Buchanan, meet with you whenever you have a minute, and he can explain to you what other options and fields there might be available, and also just talk to you about some of the other details that you brought up. Sound good? Hey, you're an awesome kid. Way to go. Rod, will you raise your hand so that Max knows who you are? Perfect. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Any more requests to speak? Vice Mayor?
No, Mayor. I guess I'll just note real quickly here, we have two items submitted for the record, did not want to speak, but on the consent items, 19, Kathy Tilke, in favor of 19, didn't want to speak, and then number 25 as well, Kathy Tilke, in favor of and did not want to speak.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. All right, that moves us now to the consent calendar. We have Agenda Items 2 through 23 today, and I look to Vice Mayor for direction.
Mayor, at this time, I'm only aware of Items 3, 9, 10, 11, 12, 16, and 17, oh, I'm sorry, and also 21, requested to be pulled for further discussion. I'll just double-check with the council now to see if there are any outside of that. There appears to be none. Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion if that's appropriate now. Mayor, I move to approve Items 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 13, 14, 15, 18, 19, 20, 22, and 23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That takes us to Agenda Item 3.
Mayor, council member Taylor asked for that one to be pulled.
And let me just do a point of clarification before we have discussion on this particular item. I was told ahead of the meeting that this one was going to be continued by staff, but it's not on our paperwork up here. So is this one continued? No? Okay. Council member Taylor.
Mayor Daniels, thank you. So just for the public that is following the agenda here, so what we have is a proposal or request for a study of the town with regards to the American Disabilities Act. The cost of it would be not to exceed $565,000,000. So just kind of set the table here. And, you know, as I listened to the case for this last time and some follow-up discussions on it, it's really trying to hedge a risk of, it sounds like there's some worry that Tempe and Chandler have been challenged in this area and we want to get ahead of this. There's a couple of reasons why I don't think this is a good use of our time or money. If I could just review those, because we're looking at a sizable amount of money, it's half a million dollars, not to exceed, but it's usually the case that the consultants come close to that for, you know, a piece of supposed insurance, right, against the federal government coming down on us on the American Disabilities. So these, some of the scouts that are out there, you see sometimes we put a brand-new curb in, and then a couple of years later, the town has to go and redo that curb. And you turn to your mom and you go, what in the world's that? It's a brand-new curb. Why are we doing that, right? That's, that's kind of what we're doing here in terms of studying what else we need to study, because there's been some revisions to the American Disabilities Act over the years, so we need to know, are we still compliant? We have an original plan from when it came forward, maybe over 20 years ago, and we've been working to that. Item 13 that we just approved is actually a really good example of why we don't need this. This is, item 13, we just approved a bunch of money, where when a citizen calls and says, hey, we've got a trip hazard here, or we have an intersection that needs to be improved for whatever reason, we're going to do this analysis already, and this would be duplicate cost and time. We, we hear from staff that they're overworked already, and as I pointed out during the budget discussion, this is the type of work, we need to move off their plate so that we don't need headcount that's unnecessary. When we deal with risk in the private world, we have an insurance policy. We have a contract that says, if this happens, we're going to be covered to this amount, right? In this case, we're not going to get any indemnification or any, any contractual protection. It's just a document that may or may not help if we supposedly get, you know, the heavy hand of the government to come down on us. And I think one of the most important comments on this was made by council member Anderson last time in terms of, you go and you index it, you come up with this big study, well, now you're on the hook for it, you have all this exposure. So it actually works against the whole objective that we're trying to accomplish here, which is to mitigate. It actually exposes us even more with actually no legal protection like a good insurance policy would do. So I think when we appropriate money, we need to have a solid ROI, a solid return to our residents. In this case, I get what we're trying to do, but I think we need to continue with a compliance posture and not go above and beyond the call of duty and, you know, make up things that aren't really, well, it's not even legally necessary, because we already have the legal documents in place to be effective in there. So Mayor, I appreciate the time, but I'll be voting no on this, and I would really like this money to be used for higher and better purposes since we're already covering this area as, as we just voted to support in Agenda 13. So Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council member Ray?
I appreciate the comments of council member Taylor, and I think he makes some good points. The concern I have with not approving this is, we know we're not in compliance already, and we know that perhaps we've been out of compliance for up to 20 years now. And so I, it is a lot of money, and I, and I appreciate that. I think it's worth the investment, especially as we've seen the trends that have been, been happening with this. And I don't know if Andrew or Town Attorney has any comments on this, but from a legal standpoint, is this something that you would, you would recommend that the town move forward with to help protect our liability?
Mayor, council member Ray, the, it's not really a legal response as much as an experience response. In dealing with the ADA, in dealing with the Justice Department, anyone else who's enforcing it, as long as you're making progress towards a goal, it is not a complete defense, but it certainly helps you in defending against any kind of claims. Once you are aware that something is out there, taking steps to correct it is what's required of you and is what they'll expect. And so in my experience, that's been the case. When something's been brought to their attention, then they look to see what the municipality has done to remedy whatever they've been aware of, and then what steps they're taking if it's not something you can remedy immediately.
Council member Cook?
I have a question for Kristin. Now, when, when we sat and chatted, Kristin, we've been kind of in the process of looking at those over the last 20 years when the town of Gilbert kind of accepted the commitment to work on being compliant. And then we talked about what we call the next 20 years. Now, what I don't have a good feel for is that for the next 20 years, let's say the consultant comes back and say, these are the things that, you know, we'll put on to our CIP for, you know, getting all these things in compliance. I can't remember what possibly could be the range of dollars that we have to set aside for CIP for the next 20 years to potentially get us in compliance for those things that we don't know yet, I guess. The consultant's going to figure that out. And I also like to understand, you know, with the prior plan, what could be the possible delta in dollars between what we had our prior plan and what we potentially could, you know, be added on to as relates to the compliance for the next 20 years?
So with relationship to this portion of the transition plan, outside of what we are currently doing within the public rights of way of staff, this plan will outline those items that are deficient and need to be brought up to standard. That does not mean that every item that they put in there would necessarily be a capital improvement project. It could be included in a park's maintenance. If the maintenance staff is out in, in the restrooms or doing certain things, that could be done by a staff. So not necessarily would everything be in a capital improvement plan. From a standpoint of what the delta would be, this is why we need the plan to be put in place, because at this time, staff does not have the expertise with buildings, parks, and that to understand those items that are, might be outside of compliance. And this plan will give us at least a programming tool to look at those that are highest risk that we would need to implement now, that management team and council would, we wouldn't put that programming in place, and then look at for the longer term, where those are, those items that are not, aren't as high as risk, that then we can look to program those out, maybe with, you know, in eight years, maybe we're looking at doing a certain park. Well, the items that that, in that park that are deficient can wait until we go in and work in that park in eight years. So it gives us a programming tool, and then each year, we would be able to come back through operating groups to show you through the budget process how we're implementing these and when it is programmed appropriately based on our resources.
If you were to take a good guesstimate, a million, 10 million, 50 million, I mean, again, you don't have, we're not going to hold you to it. I'm just trying to get a ballpark of what the magnitude could be.
Mayor, excuse me, I don't know how Kristin would be able to answer that question without doing the study. I think that's kind of the point, is that the study needs to be done in order for us to find out what the magnitude of the situation is. And some of these projects may be rolled into future development projects. Maybe a new development comes in that needs sidewalks and curb cuts or street improvements or something that can be rolled up into that development project that isn't even paid for by the town. It would be part of a development situation, too.
I'm not asking for an exact number. I'm just looking for, you know, just a ballpark.
I don't think Kristin should answer that question myself.
Mayor, that's your opinion, but I asked the question, and, you know, if she can give us a guesstimate, I would appreciate it.
Patrick?
Mayor, members of the council, councilman Cook, if I could jump in real quick. So maybe to, again, just simplify what is required under the Americans with Disabilities Act and what's before you tonight. The ADA does not require us to bring all of our buildings and all of our right-of-way into compliance immediately. What they do require from us is to have an understanding of all of our right-of-way and all of our facilities and where we are out of compliance, so that as we make improvements to roads, as we make improvements to buildings, we then are required to building, bring those facilities into compliance with the standards that have been set. And the importance of having a professional consultant that works in this field, if we should have litigation and we should have the Department of Justice step in on a matter, and it usually stems from an accident leading to a piece of right-of-way or a facility that's out of compliance, if they step in, that's the first place they will look. Where's your transition plan? And do you understand what is in compliance and what is not? And we could be fined for not having an adequate plan and understanding what we've got. But again, we're not compelled to immediately bring things into compliance. We're just required to, when we do it, know what we have and bring that into compliance when a particular project, a road reconstruction or a building's renovated. That being said, infrastructure in particular, sidewalks, intersections, if they are out of compliance, those could run into the millions of dollars. But until we actually know specifically which sidewalks, which intersections, which ramps are out of compliance, it really would be difficult to put a price tag on that. Hopefully with Gilbert and the majority of our growth occurring after the implementation of the American with Disabilities Act, we're going to see less of our right-of-way out of compliance than maybe many older American cities would, but it really would be very difficult to even ballpark a guess as to what that total cost is. But please know, we're not compelled to do it until such time that we would reconstruct those areas of our community.
Thank you, Patrick. And just because we have a lot of young people here today, and I actually think this topic might be pretty interesting to you if we didn't speak in acronyms, and so let me explain to you what ADA stands for, because we've used that term a lot. It's the Americans with Disabilities Act, and there are certain things throughout the community, things like where the height of a sink or maybe the width of a door that would be, make it easier or harder for someone who had a disability to use the facilities in Gilbert. So that's really what we're talking about, is creating a plan that identifies all of the inventory that we have in the town of Gilbert, all of the assets of the town of Gilbert. And so that's every bathroom, every sidewalk, every corner. I just didn't want you guys to think that this doesn't apply to you, because it does, and I'm grateful you're all here, listening and learning tonight. I just wanted to make sure, sometimes in government, we speak in code, and I'd hate for you not to understand what we were talking about. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think it's important to recognize that in this area of law, like probably any area of law, it's not totally settled, and so for us to even think that we can get to a place where we're perfectly in compliance, I don't, there's different interpretations and things change based on new cases. So that's first of all. And if we're not required to fix it until we reconstruct, and we're only required to repair what we're aware of is wrong, and I would say we've already got a plan to do that. We're doing that now. As we go forward with reconstructions in different areas of things we are aware of, we are fixing them. So I would argue, we're already heading in that direction. And so, you know, I heard the statement that we know we're not in compliance. Well, no, that's not, we don't know that we have any serious compliance issue. We don't know that. And so I feel very dubious about the value. I'll just be honest, I do. It's a lot of money, and I think we go forward with what we know and what we understand, and we repair those things as we go along. That's what we've been doing. But, you know, I get the argument on the other side. It's not like it's an easy issue, but I'm worried about the target. I feel like we're painting more of a target on our backs by, by going through this, rather than just proceeding with what we understand we need to fix, and we're doing that. We're doing that the best we can, and we'll continue to do so. So anyway, I just wanted to share my thoughts.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council member Anderson?
I can appreciate what council member Taylor was talking about. I was the one that originally said, it seems we're throwing money out looking for trouble. But after having an opportunity to sit down with Kristin and talk a little bit more about this, and I believe that the rest of the council can appreciate, anything that we can do to keep the federal government out of our business, let's do it. And so I feel like we do need to spend the money. We need to have the plan in place. We can't do it piecemeal, because I don't think the federal government would accept that.
Mayor, if, if I may add just one thing, just so we're clear, we are out of compliance right now by not having a plan. We are required to have a plan. We do not have one. Many cities are in the same position we are, and that's why there's been so much activity nationally to get plans put in place, because the Department of Justice has been more proactive on this issue in going out and finding cities that do not have their plans in place. We are actually legally required to have a plan, and we do not have one.
Thank you, Patrick. I think I'll, unless there's another council member that wishes to speak that hasn't yet. Oh, council member Cook?
Just a quick question. At the last meeting, and staff actually fulfilled my request to look at other communities that have kind of plans. And, and I was, shared the Chandler plan, and maybe some of you saw that. You know, I didn't have time to digest it myself, since it's got, you know, it's probably about 100 pages. And I'm not sure, Kristin, did your team actually go through that plan? And I know we looked at, the first section of that was kind of generic, and then the other ones was maybe more specific to, to the community. But I'm trying to understand, you know, do we really need to identify all the items that potentially are out of compliance, but maybe the plan is more of a policy base? And the policy might be in a point where if so, you know, such and such is discovered, that might be in alignment to, or out of compliance to such a policy, then maybe the action could be that we correct that. I'm not, I mean, again, I just want to brainstorm here, that maybe we don't have to have so much detail, but maybe it's more of a higher-level, you know, policy-based kind of plan. Is that acceptable based upon the ADA requirements?
Yeah. Mayor, council member Cook, it is not. They do actually require us to shoot the grades on every single piece of town-owned right-of-way that has to be in compliance with the Americans with the Disability Act. There is a lot of very standard language in these documents, but relative to each community, it does have to be very specific for your community and to know exactly what your grades are, where your ramps are in compliance, where they're out of compliance, so that you have an actual plan and you know what needs to be done should you reconstruct those areas.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a final comment, and what- I'd just like to make a final comment and what really, I guess, turned my decision to be supportive of this item. We have spent a lot of time and energy and effort and town resources on our long-range infrastructure plan. And that's the complete inventory of every single asset that we have in the town of Gilbert. And it helps us from a maintenance perspective, it helps us from a long-range repair and replacement perspective. It's an important tool for us in a growing community, but also an aging community, to make sure we're staying ahead of that. I really see this as a critical piece of the long-range infrastructure plan and something that we have not yet identified. Another piece that really made me feel confident, that this won't just be a study that's put on a shelf, is that all of the information that's going to be gathered and collected, and I was able to see, thanks to Councilmember Cook's recommendation, another municipality's report that is very specific, there is very specific information that will be directly related to Gilbert and Gilbert assets, but that all of this information will be entered into our GIS system, our large mapping system. And it will allow us to very quickly and easily identify that when there is a project that needs to be done on a particular street or roadway, and we know that that roadway is already programmed into our CIP, for three years from now, we can incorporate that project into that CIP plan and program. And that, to me, means that this is not a stagnant document. This is a living document that will really create a pathway forward for us to improve the community as we grow and as we age. So that's really what turned me to a yes vote on this, and I really appreciate the research and information that's been provided by staff to this end. So I think with that, we've all had a moment to speak, and I will request a motion. Mayor, move to approve item number three on our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. I believe that moves us to Agenda Item 9.
Mayor, there's no need to drag this out. Nine and 10 I asked to pull. I've talked about this before. I see this as a one-time money being bond, voter-approved bond money going toward an ongoing expense, which is repair and replacement. So I just pulled to vote on that separately, Mayor.
Sir, motion?
Move to approve Items 9 and 10, Mayor.
Thank you. One comment from Councilmember Taylor? I apologize.
Yeah. You know, we've talked in the budget, and I'm going to be a broken record on this. We should be paying this out of general fund, not a, we should do repair and replacement. Don't put them on the credit cards. This is the wrong way to spend this. We need to do this. We need to find the right source. But that's another reason why we need to really look at our dollars and how we're spending it on things that don't make sense, like what we just approved, because this is really where that money needs to go. And this is really where we have a really good return for our residents. So I would hope that when we have repair and replace, that it does come right out of, we don't use debt to do that. You just don't put that on your, on your credit cards at home. We shouldn't do it for the town either.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I do expect that we will have a robust conversation about that at our spring retreat, our spring financial retreat, which will be in March. So I believe we have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. Agenda Item 11?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook asked for that to be pulled.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I would actually like to make a suggestion on this particular agenda item and ask that we postpone it for about a month. And let me share kind of my rationale and thinking about this particular agenda item. About three or four months ago, at the Parks and Recs Board, I made a suggestion of an idea that this particular bridge that goes across the Gilbert South Regional Park, I shared with the, with the board members and commissioners. I said, this is one of these ideas, is not to come back and say how yet, but more, I'm looking for the wow. So the thought was, we have an opportunity here where this particular bridge could look like some of the famous bridges worldwide that looks artistically, you know, just unbelievable. And I shared with the team that the taxpayer would not pay for this. If we could find a benefactor, someone that was very wealthy, or a group of individuals that were wealthy, that we came up with a bridge that was aesthetically, you know, somewhat unbelievable, that would align to that South Regional Park, and we could find a funding source that was not from the taxpayer, that they could also have, you know, this, these individuals or individual could have naming rights for this particular bridge, this could be a potential option. And so next Tuesday, at the Parks and Recs Board, we're actually having this on the agenda item for discussion. So what I'd like to suggest is that we postpone this to next month, after the Parks and Board kind of has a discussion with this. They may want to take this as a project to see and work with the, you know, the Arts, you know, the Arts Commission. We bring that back online and have the Parks Board and Arts Commission maybe collaborate, and let's see where this goes. It's one of those rare moments where we might, you know, look back and say, you know, that was a good idea, because we found some really unique sources of funding to build a unique bridge. So anyway, I share that with you. If there's an appetite to postpone us a month because, and wait till after the Parks Board meeting next Tuesday, I would appreciate that.
Councilmember Peterson, to my left, Bridgette Peterson, has offered to win the Powerball. And then we can name it the Bridgette Bridge.
Bridgette Bridge.
We think that works best. I don't have any concerns with that, but I do want to look to staff to see if we have a timing issue. And Councilmember Ray.
So I'm fine with postponing it. I also wonder if, we're jumping the gun a little bit with this, that the park, I don't, my personal opinion is the park is not completely designed yet. And there's no funding source yet for it. So I'm a little bit afraid to design a bridge for something that we have talked about, potential designs. I just don't think that where the park stands today on paper is what it's going to end up being, for any number of reasons. As funding comes in, as we do it in phases, not in phases, et cetera. And so I'm a little bit hesitant, even in a month, to move forward on this until we are confident that the park design is set. And I, let me rephrase that, until we're confident that we have funding to design, to build the current design. Because I'm not sure that funding will exist. And so I'm a little bit hesitant to design a bridge that could potentially be changed dramatically based on the way the park's designed.
So this isn't full design. This is 15%, which I think is probably at least where we need to get to, to start having some of those types of conversations. Because I think you're right about, there's been a lot of changes, I think even the last couple of weeks, about some of the needs at the park. So I'm happy to explore that.
So Mayor, the real kind of driver here is Fire Station 9. It's just that if that bridge were to go up sooner than later, that team would have an ability to get to the other side quicker than going around. So I know there is a business reason to look at this, but again, I'm just asking if we could just postpone at least a month, if there's an appetite with the Parks Board to maybe look at this as a project, again.
I'm getting a head nod from our town manager, so I think that we are fine to continue this for a month, and looking at our town engineer. Thank you. Okay, we will just continue this. We do need a motion to continue to date certain.
Mayor, I would move that we continue Agenda Item 11 to a future date.
I think we have to date certain, that October 15th, 19th?
19th, 19th, I think.
19th, is that right, Lisa?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-o vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 12.
I have to smile at what some people are calling this Garage Mahal project. It's a pretty cute name, actually. So Mayor, I've made my objections known. I think this project is overkill. I believe that growth should pay for growth. And I don't think this project meets that, it certainly doesn't meet that standard directly, nor based on the data that I have. And admittedly, it's incomplete. I'm still looking for more. But based on the little I have, it doesn't even come close to meeting it indirectly either. So again, I'm a champion for growth, paying for its, the infrastructure required to pay for it. And, you know, I just, I just don't think it meets that standard. I won't ramble, Mayor. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. All entertainment motion? Move to approve item number 12, Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. And that moves us to Agenda Item 16.
Mayor, for my part, 16 and 17 are in the same category. We've talked ad nauseam, I'm sure, for most people's taste regarding the federally funded grants. So I just wanted to pull and vote on them separately, Mayor.
Thank you. Sir, Councilmember Ray, I mean, Taylor, sorry.
Sorry. Mayor, thank you. Patrick, we've asked for some information in some of the grants. You know, some of the federal grants that where we're putting, you know, the burden on our children and grandchildren, you know, I never support. But we get federal grant money, that's our highway gas tax money. I'd like to have that called out, because that truly is the money that they've taken from us, you know, at the gas pump. And I try to do research to find, in these highway transportations, sometimes they're deficit spending, other times they're gas tax money. It'd be really helpful for us to know, is this really the money that's coming out of our pocket? And, you know, the bureaucrats in Washington take a cut and then hand it back to us in these grants? Or, you know, is it the deficit spending? So that would be just helpful going forward in some of these areas, because I certainly would support that where it is the gas tax money. And I'm not sure if we can have any assurance tonight on Item 16, but otherwise, you know, we can't assume, you know, too much here, but maybe, I don't know if you have any comments?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, we do try to, where we know a known source of where the funding's coming from, to list that in there. Specific to this one, I'm not certain if that is indeed gas tax dollars. Maybe Chief Solberg could help us on this topic.
Mayor Daniels, Councilmember Taylor, the specifics you want, I do not have. I can tell you on the GOHS money, talked to Alberto Gutierrez with the Governor's Office, 97% of that funding comes from federal money. Most of it's earmarked in different, various different packages. So to give you that precise, exactly the source, I don't have that information. He didn't have that precise information. Each state has to present a highway and safety plan to the federal government, which qualifies us for those funds. That other 3% of the GOHS money that's available comes from DUI convictions, from fines assessed to that. So those are local, state-generated revenue that comes back to the GOHS and back to the local departments. But that's as specific as I could get.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I have heard Councilmember Taylor ask for that many times. So let's just start on the agenda, noting source when available, and making sure we just note when we cannot trace it all the way back, which, given that we are working with multiple agencies, that's not totally surprising. But also, I have heard him also ask for what strings might be attached, what matching we might have, and other things. I know sometimes those are included in our council communication, sometimes it's communicated another way, so.
And in these two, there are no matching funds in either.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, thank you for that. And what Councilmember Taylor is asking for, I just want to make clarification, that is a required, a requirement of our financial policies, and we just recently reaffirmed that. So I appreciate the efforts from staff. Sometimes it's hard to know, but I think we need to try, at least if we can't say, we would say that in the package. So, but you said that, Mayor. Thank you for that help.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
All right, Chief. You can't sit down. I'm going to put you on the spot. I know that we've had some discussions in the past. I know Chief Bryce and I have had discussions as well. As it relates to your, your business that you run now with PD, I guess the question I have, why would these funds that we're looking at here not be part of your normal budget that you would put forth in front of us, so that we would not need to? I'm curious what your, your thoughts are as it relates to moving forward as you run the PD department. Why would you not just add them to our budget plan for fiscal year, you know, 19? I'd be curious to hear what your thoughts are.
Mayor Daniels and Councilmember Cook, it's value-added. It's money that's available from various resources. And so it, I could budget that, that additional amount, but that offer would still be available. It's a matter of doing more with less. We've got these, the funds, and we do a great job with our DUI enforcement, talking to Alberto Gutierrez. Our DUI arrests almost outpace Phoenix, the entire city of Phoenix. And when you look at the capacity, the number of not only patrol and traffic officers that are doing that daily enforcement, we get a great bang for our buck. And funding all that out of our limited resources, it's just, I could always ask for more if you're willing to give me more. But with that money being available both through the federal and the state level, it's money that we can not only utilize with our existing personnel, they still do, based on our budget that is approved, they're doing their normal traffic enforcement. This is added on. So the DUI enforcement, the task forces that we see under all the holidays, the Click-It, Fix-It, Click-It, all these educational different components, that's what funds that. We could use town operating funds, but I don't see the desire to do that in the fact that if those funds are available, if that well dries up, to where those funds through either the federal or the state funds are not available, then we would either have to incur that expense ourselves, or stop doing that, or realign our department in some way to still do that, but at the cost of something else. So while those funds are available, which they have been for over 10 years, and I believe my entire career, over 22 years, that they've been available at varying levels. And those appropriations of funds through the Governor's Office is based on productivity. And that's why we are asking for the amount we are. We are getting more than other agencies, at least the potential to get more. And so based on our productivity, if we have more officers, we will produce more, which may generate the opportunity to receive more funds. So to cut those off, I think it's hurting ourself, it's hurting the safety of our citizens to budget that out of ours and decline taking that money from the state or the feds.
So again, this is back to, again, a philosophy here, as it relates to financial responsibility and being fiscal responsible with the taxpayer dollars. I guess the question I have here then, you know, if you see that these particular activities as a must-have, that our community cannot live without, that we need this level of service from your team, then my expectation would be that you would, you know, budget that. And that we, as a community, would also feel, you know, responsible, that we would support that level of service that you're seeking. So I'm, again, back to your question, are these must-haves? And, and again, I know you might think there's other funds elsewhere, but, you know, again, you know, talking, listening to Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Peterson, or Vice Mayor Peterson, about this, you know, again, I appreciate, you know, your, your background in Mesa, and maybe that was something that was a philosophy and a business, you know, plan that you guys adopted. Again, I'm just trying to, I'm pushing back here a little bit, as it relates to, are these really must-have in our community, and why not include that in our normal budget?
I would say they are must-haves in the fact that the more funds we have available, the more productivity we can do, and the more enforcement we can do, which is the end result. Our primary goal is to make sure the community's safe, whether that's through general funds or funds from another resource. I think you're right. That is a philosophical difference we may have, but in the fact that with those funds available, with the staffing, I could ask for more staffing to do that, but then the question that I would bring to you would be, I've increased my staff by like, let's say 10, to accomplish everything we accomplished with these grants. Now we have the opportunity to still have this same money. Are you willing to accept that money to where we can even do more? Even though I just added 10 traffic officers to do all the enforcement that this does, can we double those efforts by accepting these funds and do even more for our community, make it even safer than what it is now?
And again, just an example with the Mesa team. I know that the Mesa team had a grant to basically add PAs to the TRV program. That program has now ran out of the federal funds, and I'm not sure those PAs, along with the TRV teams, are going to be available. the TRV teams are going to be available anymore. Because that's obviously, as you said, if for some reason those funds are gone, you develop your teams, you know, to support that.
I'm going to try to steer us back to the specific agenda item tonight, I think it's important for us to address this. I appreciate the questions that you've asked, Councilmember Cook, because I think they're important to ask. And I appreciate the expertise and level of expertise that's being used to really deploy our resources in a responsible way. In all of our departments, but in the case of the police department, you're new on the team, and we really appreciate the efforts that you're making. So with that, Councilmember Cook, do you have anything else to add? Okay. At this time, we will entertain a motion on agenda item, I think 16 and 17.
I move to approve items 16 and 17.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote, thank you. And I believe that takes us to agenda item 21.
Mayor, there may be others who want to speak on this. First of all, I am glad that we've done something related to this, I think it's important to have code of ethics, and really that goes above and beyond. I think that's fitting for Gilbert, who we are, and I appreciate that, and I know that a lot of work has gone into this, and I think we're moving in the right direction. I have one concern, I think that the $50 per diem threshold, as far as a threshold over, if they exceed, they have to then report, I think that's too high. The way I understand it, a per diem is per day. So if they get a whole day of meals, that's already kind of beyond, I think, what would be the norm in contract negotiations, one meal would make sense to me. So, but $50, I would like to change that, I don't know if there's others who are willing to, I'd like to lower that just a little, I'm not saying that that would be a violation to it, except a meal beyond that, but I think it should be reported above probably 30, I think, even that is plenty of room, plenty of breathing room to still operate within normal conditions, in my opinion. So that was my only suggestion on this one, Mayor.
Understanding $50 is used because that mirrors our town council adopted ethics policy. And so I think we were trying to make sure that we were being consistent in that, in that way. So I will look to, was there any other legal reason, or, I think the state is $50 too? So we're consistent with the state, okay. At that, I'll look to the rest of the council to see if there's a desire to move to $30?
I'm okay staying consistent, I thought it was a little high as well, but if we're consistent, that's fine, but $30, I would certainly support that. I've seen that in the private sector as at 25, but I know food got a lot more expensive since that time, so.
I think we only eat at Payway and Chipotle across the street, so we're always safe. Gilbert? All right. That wasn't a plug for anybody, we'll add Arizona Barbecue Company to that in the next little while. Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just one other comment, I really like this, and Patrick, appreciate your team putting this together and bringing this forward, I think it'll be a good protection for employees and for leadership management. And happy to support the wording tonight, but do want to see if there's a discussion about, and I don't have the exact wording, just ran out of time this week on it, but a prohibition on any gifts of any magnitude, maybe six months prior to involvement in a negotiation or an RFP, from anybody on that. And if they did, perchance, they didn't know they would be pulled in or asked, they would just need to recuse themselves from participating on the team. I'm happy to work with legal and try to get some appropriate wording on there, but, you know, in six months, maybe too short, maybe it needs to be longer, but just somehow make sure.
Why don't we make that a future agenda item, if you want to fill out a card and have a couple councilmembers sign it, that'll help move that forward, I think, in a way that would allow us to do that outside, because it's really not specific to this agenda item.
Yeah. Andrew, did you have something, just, Mayor cut off there a little bit?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, I think it's prudent actually to evaluate that one separately because we want to make sure that we dovetail nicely with the current conflict of interest statute, to ensure that you don't put someone in a position of potentially violating the statute, but not violating your code. So I'd like to have an opportunity to make sure those mesh well, and I think it's certainly something we can handle at a reasonable period of time, three days is easy to mark particularly.
Perfect.
Okay, Mayor, thank you, and I'll send that down, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion on agenda item 21?
Mayor, move to approve 21.
Second.
Motion in a second, please vote. Motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. That does complete our consent calendar, and that moves us to the public hearing items. We have two agenda items for our public hearing. Those items will be heard at one public hearing, anyone wishing to comment can fill out a comment card in the back of the room, and our vice mayor will assist with that. Do we have any requests to speak on either of these public hearing items?
Mayor, we don't have any from the public, I'm not aware of any from the council, but we can check now.
Okay, I will open the public hearing on agenda items 24 and 25, and close the public hearing on those agenda items, and entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve items 24 and 25.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. That does complete public hearing items, congratulations. And that moves us to our administrative items, and agenda item 26, a presentation on the findings of the National Citizen Survey. Melanie?
Mayor, councilmembers, Melanie Dykstra, Community Resources Supervisor, I am here tonight to present the results of our National Citizen Survey 2017. What we want to report on highlight is, we'll go over a little bit of what the National Citizen Survey is, some of the areas of measurement that were used, how we stack up overall, looking both nationally and with our peer communities. We'll also review the trends over time, we've been doing the survey since 2013. We'll also look if we have any differences between North and Southern residents as we surveyed. We'll talk a little bit about takeaways, and then I can answer any questions. So this is the National Citizen Survey. So again, we've been in this since 2013, this year we did solicit responses from, we requested responses from 1,500 Gilbert residents, we did receive response from 313 of our residents, which gave us a 94% confidence rating. With that, we also did this year, something new, we were able to offer an opt-in web survey portion, and from that, we had 898 respondents, which was an excellent opportunity for residents to provide their feedback. They did answer over 20 grid-style questions, as well as some demographics. Although the results are not statistically valid because they are not random, they were just an opportunity for people to provide feedback. When we did review them, they were very closely matched to our mailed-in statistically valid results. We are hoping in the future to move more in that direction, as we can see that our residents were professionally interested in providing their feedback. But generally, the survey is collecting the data on attitudes and satisfaction level and behavior of our residents. And again, we looked at these with our benchmarks, we looked at the trends, and we do look in our North and Southern residents. So again, when we look to measure the ability of Gilbert, we're looking in three subject areas, these are considered our pillars. We looked at community characteristics, the governance, and the participation. And within each of these, you can see the eight central themes that were asked with each of these pillars. So how did we stack up? How did we do overall for Gilbert? So when we look across our three platforms, we're looking against 500-plus communities that the National Research Center does use for the database. But because some of those are not good benchmarks for us, there's a variety of communities that has that information, we then try to get some more custom and performance measures, and so we do benchmark against 15 communities that we select. And we're selecting those based on their size and scope, so they're more of a like comparison for Gilbert. In addition, we also look at our past performance, so we look specifically back to 2015 and how we're doing. So overall, what we did find, comparing to the National Citizen Database, so how we looked nationally, that we are very strong in our community characteristics. So we were similar, what we show is on par to some of our communities, 29% of the aspects were similar. But generally, we are higher or much higher in community characteristics as we look nationally. We also benchmarked higher in our governance area, so we were 59% of our aspects were ranked higher or much higher than the national. When we look at participation, we generally are on par with the rest of our communities to how our residents engage. We did score lower, but it was only two categories, one is use of public transportation. So as many of you realize, many of us use our own cars and our personal vehicles that are around, other than mass transit. So we do rank a little bit lower than the national average in that category. The other one we were a little bit lower in was attendance at a town special event. So even though we ranked a little bit lower in attendance at a town special event to the national benchmark, 49% of our residents actually expressed the fact that they do attend. So that is still a high level of participation, it just happens to be a bit lower than some of the national benchmarks that were looked at. So in addition, when we were comparing to our national database, I wanted to just highlight some of our top rankings. 99% of our community members gave us a, rated us a percent positive as a place to live. And the percent positive is looking at the combination of our two most positive responses, so those are excellent, or good, or essential, or very important. We also had top rankings as an overall place to raise children, the quality of life, our overall image, and our overall feeling of safety. Again, I wanted to highlight some of our comparison of the national benchmark, we were higher a lot in governance, people really feel that, you know, we treat our residents fairly, we have good customer service, and we're welcoming citizen involvement. So trying to drill down a little bit more, how did we do more locally, how did we do more with the peers, some of the communities that are very similar to Gilbert? We did extremely well. We are ranked higher or similar in all of the categories that we had comparisons. And we also scored much higher for overall image and reputation, and as a place to raise children. I also wanted to note, as you can see on the slide, that we had a number one ranking in services provided by the town. In addition, we are also ranked number two as a place to retire. So overall, when we look at even how we do locally and across similar communities ourselves, we are doing very, very well. So again, we had some top 10 rankings nationally, we had 30 top 10 rankings, and we ranked number one in variety of housing options, as well as number one in cost of living. In addition, the number one rankings through our peer communities, we had 38 number one rankings. And again, one of them was overall quality of life, and another one was services provided by the town of Gilbert. We also look at our trends over time, so how are we doing between 2017 versus 2015? So there's 132 available comparisons between these years, and we didn't see a lot of changes, we're pretty stable over the course of time. We did show six increase in ratings, and we also showed six decrease in ratings. The increases that we saw were employment opportunities, mental health care, confidence in town government, those who used a Gilbert Recreation Center, participated in spiritual religious activities, and voted in a local election. So we saw a little bit rise in participation in those activities or rankings that we had. The ones that we showed a decrease in, there was less than a 10% change, and that was ease of walking, traffic enforcement, street repair, traffic signal timing, which David's already fixed, so we're good there for the next one, special events, and then those not under the housing cost stress. Again, we also like to look at how our North and South, we know our North and South has developed a little bit differently, we've been a growing community, we use the 202 as kind of our dividing line, that's kind of been the big change that we've seen in Gilbert. So we want to also just take the results and compare our residents that way. We did have 148 respondents from the Northern residents and 165 from the South. So this just table just kind of gives you a sampling, there were seven, this is seven of the 20 statistically significant differences we saw between our Northern and Southern residents. You know, more notable difference that we saw, which is not to be surprised, is that our North residents do feel a little more connection to the community, they find it easier to walk to a destination, they're more engaged in our community events, they're more likely to reach out to the town and use Gilbert Recreation offerings. Conversely, as is expected until we get the new park in, our Southern residents are using, you know, non-Gilbert Recreation offerings more often. But what I, one of the things I found interesting is that our Southern residents really invest in recycling, 100% of the residents say they recycle at home. So that was really interesting, so the South Area Service Center and our recycling is definitely making an impact. But in general, all of our residents do agree that we offer a high quality of life, we're clean, safe, and a good place to raise children. So basically, our next steps in terms of looking at our overall feedback, generally people are very pleased with the overall quality of life here in Gilbert, they're satisfied with the direction the town is moving, they feel safe here, and they're definitely willing to recommend us to others for living here. So again, to highlight some of our well-ranked services, new development and housing options, our economic activity, our ease of transportation overall, public safety, recreation, wellness, those are definitely some of our areas that were ranked the highest. Some of the areas that require more attention maybe to look at is continuing to reach out and making sure that the public feel like they can engage and participate. You know, special events, you know, what does that look like, attending a town special event? We know as we develop the South, some of that will become easier, and there will be more attendance at those, as well as, you know, looking at public transportation. When we did a bit of the survey that looked at the mass transit, over 50% said they would use mass transit, the high-speed mass transit. So there is still some interest in there, but, you know, it's just developing those lines. So with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you, Melanie. Did I hear 30 top 10 rankings for the town of Gilbert?
Yes.
We should give 30 claps, right? Is that how you do it, Councilmember Taylor? 30 claps? All right, thank you, Melanie, that was great. Any questions from Council, Vice Mayor?
I just want a clarifying question, what you're saying is that we're the best?
Absolutely.
I just want to state that.
Thanks, Melanie, that was a great report. And we do this every three years, is that correct?
Right now, we are doing it every two years.
Every two, okay, thank you very much. We have some room for improvement, I think, on a couple areas. I think one of the challenges with the growing community is always participation and engagement. But I will say that, based on the applications that we've received over the last little while for some of our boards and commissions, we are regularly getting people who have lived in Gilbert for less than a year, or maybe 18 months. It's really impressive to see that as soon as someone gets here, they immediately look for ways to engage, and we really appreciate that. Makes Gilbert a better place. At this time, are there any boards, commission, and committee reports?
Mayor, I think I have a committee report, and I think Heather's going to help me with that.
I think you do. And then it looks like Councilmember Anderson also has one, okay.
We have a report about Gilbert Feeding Families. September is Hunger Action Month, and we decided to do our food drive, our annual food drive this month. So we're looking to raise 172,000 pounds of food. And for those of you that don't realize it, the United Food Bank last year provided over 200,000 meals to Gilbert residents. So by us providing 172,000 back to them, then we would be basically just supporting our community, and then they'd still have to come up with more. Every dollar raised will provide four meals through the United Food Bank, so we will very, very welcomingly, welcomingly take your money as well as your food. But we do, we would like to take the bulk food, and we'll be out at the farmer's market for the next few Saturdays, actually, I will be there this Saturday volunteering, so anybody that wants to stop by and drop some change in our jar, or drop off some bulk food, I'd be happy to take it from you, thank you. And Mayor, I think we need to do a challenge, we probably need to do a council challenge like we've done for the past couple of years.
Council challenge, it is. You got one in mind? Maybe next?
Yeah, we'll think about it.
Okay. She'll let us know what our challenge is, and I'm sure we'll gratefully accept. Are you going to be wearing a headband with some?
The orange.
Orange?
That I wore yesterday.
On Saturday?
I don't think I will have that on on Saturday.
Okay.
I think it might be a little hot.
Okay. So we'll look for you at the farmer's market?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
In keeping with the spirit of the Garage Mahal, I'm happy to report that the, we have selected a consultant to do the redevelopment plan, master plan for the downtown, and we're embarking on that in the next few weeks, and looking forward to some exciting things from that consultant.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Anyone else? All right, that moves us to a report from the Town Manager and Current Events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Couple things tonight, wanted to announce that our sixth annual Spark App League competition, registration is now open, you can go to our website at sparkappleague.com. And we just sent out some releases yesterday, but we're again very proud to have the Smithsonian Institution join us this year as a collaborative partner, specifically the Lemelson Center for Innovation and Creativity, they're going to be involved in both the fall and spring events, and the student teams that'll participate in this year's app competitions, those apps and games will actually be used by the Smithsonian Institution back in DC. So a wonderful opportunity for our local students, not only in Gilbert, but across the state, and a wonderful program that we also do in partnership with Arizona State University, and Google Self-Driving Car Corporation, Waymo. and Google self-driving car corporation, Waymo. Next, tonight, the Public Relations Society of America has their annual awards and two of our departments with Town and Gilbert have won Copper Anvil Awards for work. One is our Economic Development Team for their annual report and our other is our Digital Government Team for Integrated Communication. So very proud of the efforts of both those departments and recognition of those efforts by the Public Relations Society of America. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Patrick. Report from council on current events. Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Cook?
Am I stealing your thunder to talk about the Faith Group Summit? So the Faith Group Summit is coming up, it's Thursday? The 12th, forgot the date and it was Thursday, oh 14.
14.
Oh my goodness. So the 14th, Thursday, we are going to have our Faith Group Summit, we do annually, we're very excited about that, so we just want to make sure all of the faith groups in Gilbert know they are welcome, they are supported. We want to do everything we can to help them succeed and I compliment the mayor for continuing that great tradition. For our city, Gilbert's going to be there talking about our run for good, also trying to provide opportunities for nonprofits and including the churches to be engaged and have opportunities for interacting with the public and things like that. So we're excited and just want to invite everyone and remind them of that great event.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Mayor, thank you to the council. This last Saturday, I had the privilege to joining, I saw, I see Mark Kramer back here in the back, one of his team members, Mike, in the IT team, you may remember, he has an Apache heritage and his grandmother had lived in San Carlos. So all, we had the Town Gilbert or Team Gilbert had a backpack drive and all of those hundreds of backpacks went to San Carlos on Saturday, so I had the privilege of joining our small team there and, you know, I know that the San Carlos Council, when they visited us, I know they invited us there. So it was a great opportunity for me to go visit their community and we handed out all these wonderful backpacks and, you know, it really makes, you know, for me, it was a humbling experience because we have so much wonderfulness in Gilbert when you see all those wonderful accolades of how well we're doing and when you, when you visit our good friends to the east, it really makes us, you know, really appreciate what we have. And I am really grateful that our relationship with the San Carlos nation, that we continue to foster that relationship and whatever we can do to, again, share our blessings with them, I encourage for us to continue to do that. So anyways, Mark, please give Mike a raise, he did a phenomenal job, you know, with the team, had a great time getting to know him and the community, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. Patrick, are you getting updates about our digital team right now? I've just gotten word that our digital team has won the biggest award of the night at the Copper Anvils, so I'm sure we'll get to hear more about that in the coming weeks. So that was an exciting text I just received. With that, I, oh, Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, wanted to talk about Constitution Week a little bit, if that's okay? Am I trumping anybody here from doing that? Highlight a couple of dates. Well, before I do that, constitutionfair.org is the new website address. If you go to constitutionweek.com, it'll point you over there, but constitutionfair.org will give you a lot of good information. And usually, Constitution, the events are well underway because they usually go to about every school in Gilbert Public Schools and Higley and some of the charters outside the districts as well and usually touch about 40, 50,000 students with little lessons, so that's well underway, which is fun, but three dates that are important. Next Wednesday, the 13th and the 20th is Scout Night and so we had lots of scouts and it's fun to see them spin up and I want to just thank those of you that have taught in the past. I know sometimes it works out in your calendar, sometimes it doesn't, but some of you might be back, but for the scouts that, or parents that are probably watching this maybe, it's really fun because you do get elected officials and you get access and people that are policymakers in either the national, county, local areas to talk about these mayor badges, so it's a very unique and great opportunity. The fair, the big event, is on the 16th, Saturday night. It starts at 6 o'clock, it's here at Town, on the grounds of Town Hall, as it has been for the last couple of years. Expecting 8,000 again, lots of great food, great music and I do want to put a plug in, I'm so glad that Councilmember Anderson and I, we don't have to be out campaigning like we did last year, so it's nice. But with that, I do want to make a plug that it's so important for people to be engaged. We just talked about participation in our community and this is a good time. The Constitution Week organizers do make a concerted effort to bring people, to introduce candidates, register to vote, sign petitions and let's up our ranking here a little bit and I would just encourage everyone to come out, meet people that are crazy enough to put themselves out and run for office, there will be some there, but that's just really important. We live in a time when it's important to be civically engaged and this is a good event when we can celebrate the wonderful, you know, country that we have and its founding and meet people and try to continue to build on that. So Mayor, thank you for the time and we encourage everyone to come out and enjoy the events.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I have no additional report on current events and so we will recess, as our motion to recess our regular meeting and reconvene in an executive session. Councilmember Ray and seconded was Councilmember Taylor. Thank you. Thank you for all attending tonight. Have a good night.